We come before you asking you for your divine help, your wisdom and your guidance for this city, for this council, for our mayor and the citizens of Inkster. We pray, Lord Jesus, that you would give us wisdom as we deal with these affairs. We pray, God, that you would help us to bind our hearts together in love and unity, that we may accomplish your agenda and your will for this city. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Proton Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have Summerton, I have a corner.
Right. Everybody had chance to look at the agenda. Is anything we need to add? Delete? Do we add? We do have the two votes taking the closed session. Do we actually add those to the agenda? Or we just?
Okay.
Make a motion to add the two closed session items to the agenda?
Support.
Probably move supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, so I and J. Items I and J are added to the agenda. Do we know which is? What was the first one we did? We'll figure it out. Okay. Alright, yeah, that's the first one. Okay. Anything else on the agenda we need to change? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Presentations. For once, we have no presentations. So I know that's everyone's favorite part. Okay, we're gonna move up to public hearing. That's you.
A public hearing to apply for the Wayne County 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant funding in the amount of $216,477.
Make a motion to open public hearing?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Okay, everybody. It's a public hearing. This is where the public talks. We talked about it in the last meeting. I think we did the first reading. Oh, we did a public hearing and first reading. So does anyone want to comment, have a question regarding the community development block grant funding for 2018-2019 in the amount of $216,477? Come on up to the podium. Let me cut off to the mic. Public hearing. State your name, social security number. Driver's license number.
I just haven't seen, maybe I've missed some meetings, but I haven't seen where the money's going to be allocated. Can you expand on that?
Sure, Ms. Foner.
So the activities that the city of Inkster has chosen to pursue for the upcoming application year as well as in years prior are code enforcement, housing rehab, public services, demolition, administration and planning. And I believe there was some question about what public services actually are. So that's basically the debris and wheat cutting throughout the summer with temporary employees. They work with the public service department.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Holmes? Okay. Any other comments or questions on this issue? Up here, anybody?
Yeah, I got one question. There was a 10% that was going to allocate to communities doing the project together.
Last year, yeah, I remember.
It's in here too. I'm just trying to find it again.
Just continue.
We never did any of the projects.
So they didn't, they don't approve every municipality's project. The city of Inkster continued to put forth an application to do so, but we have not been selected thus far.
Okay, okay. Will we be privy to see for additional fundings on those funds that other communities don't use like they've been doing in the past?
So if the application becomes available, if there are any funds left at the end, then we would apply, I would assume. However, we won't know until the end of that application program year. So the application that was put forth last November, December, around that time, was from fiscal year 2016 or that program year for the funds that were left over so they wouldn't go back to the federal government.
Thank you.
The demonstration project is no longer?
We can still apply every year. And this will be for the following year. So this isn't the current program year that we're in. But we can still apply moving forward. But all the municipalities within the Wayne County Block Grant Program give 10% of the funds is allocated toward demonstration projects.
Yeah, we need some good ideas for those type of projects from anybody, residents, council, so we can maybe hopefully get awarded some money.
Is that same money that Island Park or somebody else got?
That was E-course.
Okay. I knew it wasn't us.
No, I don't think that would be called demonstration money. Demonstration money was you get to collaborate with another community. Sorry. The demonstration money was money we had to use to collaborate with another community on the project.
And what Councilwoman Watley is referring to is the money that was left over at the end of, from the program year 2016. That's the application that we submitted for additional funds for demo. And E-course was the recipient of all the funds that were left for Wayne County Land Bank. I mean, I'm sorry, not the Wayne County Community Development Block Grant, the funds that were left. E-course, they submitted an application as well as did the city of Inkster and I believe 20 other municipalities. However, E-course was awarded the funds.
Correct. Okay, anybody else?
I cannot just make a comment.
You gotta come on up. Yeah, come on up. Glad to see you though. Nice haircut.
What I want to come to say, and it's got nothing to really do with you, because I'm doing a great research on this block grant money that we've been getting. Now, I think it's unfair because we are under the 50,000 that we cannot use that money for youth activities and projects within our community. And they're doing it down in Detroit and other big cities where they got more than 50,000. I'm doing my homework, okay? So when I go down there to talk with the commissioners, I'm gonna mention it because I think it's unfair.
Is that, is that a commissioner law or is that a federal law?
Well, I don't, I don't know what it is. What, who holds that law? But all I know, I can't sit up here and watch them take block grant money and give it to Detroit and other big areas and we can't, we can't use it for nothing around here for these children. I mean, I just can't take it.
That's, it falls under the national objective.
Yeah, I think you're gonna have to talk to the congressman, the person that you do not have right now.
Well, I'll talk to him, right?
Without any other comments? Okay, we're gonna move on. Let's see. Consent agenda.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, do?
Support.
Been properly moved, support, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Consent agenda.
Make a motion to agenda as is.
Support. Been supported, probably move, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Boards and commissions. Any, anybody? Any nominations? Anybody left over from last meeting? Do we have some vacancies?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna do some more work next meeting. We got to, everybody take a look at that stuff so let's get some of these spots appointed.
Mr. Chair. Board of Review. I noticed that they're all say one term. I did talk to the person that I appointed last year and she did say she was gonna do it again this year.
Okay.
Mrs. Warman.
It's coming up pretty soon, is it?
Uh, yeah, it's about two weeks from now.
Do we have a full complement?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
But he needs to appoint her.
You need to.
We already have her information.
Hey, I make a motion to reappoint Lenora Warman.
Okay, and we looked, we have, we looked at her resume last time we appointed. So are we ready to take a vote? Any second?
I support it.
Okay, been properly moved, seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Anybody else?
I would just need three more.
Alright, great.
I thought we had already.
What'd he say?
Do we have a full complement?
We only need one more person. Right?
Were they all appointed at the last meeting?
No.
Nobody was.
I think he said that somebody moved and that's why we had to make that appointment.
So who do we appoint to replace her?
We just, um...
No, she was already on there.
Yeah, Warman was already on there.
She was already on there. Because we need to replace her because in two weeks, because we won't meet again. Unless you guys want to have an emergency meeting.
They have an alternate.
Wants to remain alternate.
We have an alternate.
Remain alternate.
That's Gina Tripple.
Okay.
But we have an alternate.
So we're covered now. But we need to reappoint that position. Whose district is it?
Tina?
Who's district? Celeste McDuffie.
It doesn't say.
Does math? Okay.
So, um, Will Miller, he needs to be reappointed.
Will Miller needs to be reappointed?
Right. The Board of.
Board of Review. Do we have a motion?
Move. Support.
Been properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
We just need to somebody to do Celeste McDuffie. I mean, but you don't have anyone for that.
Okay, so we need, next meeting, we need to replace Celeste McDuffie.
He did used to do that.
Okay. She says she's gonna check with one of her residents to see if he's interested in it, so hopefully we'll have that name next week. And let's look at what other vacancies we have on important boards and commissions. Can you send an email out to let everybody know so we can be prepared next week? Alright, we're gonna move. We're gonna move on to second readings.
A second reading and approval of a map amendment Z-18-06 to the city's zoning map to rezone 65 parcels along Dunning and Plum Streets from R-1B, one-family residential zoning, to M-1 light industrial zoning.
What move, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, it passes, support you. Second reading.
A second reading and approval of text amendments TA-18-05 to the city's zoning ordinance pertaining to security camera and buffer distance requirements for medical marijuana facilities per the recommendations of the planning commission.
The move, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval to seek an RFP for building department services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a motion?
That notch. Some move.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval of the Information Technology Services Contract with Complete Corporate Solutions to provide IT services to the city of Inkster Municipal Buildings.
So move.
Support.
You're real eager on this, right? It's been properly moved and supported twice. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval authorizing the DPS Director to make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for a permit to maintain the storm water management system and detention pond in the locations of the Inkster Town Center at 27455 Michigan Ave in Inkster, Michigan in accordance with the drawing attached as Exhibit A, the terms of long-term maintenance plan attached as Exhibit B, and the Wayne County Storm Water Ordinance and Administrative Rules.
The move for discussion? Been properly moved, supported, discussion?
If we get the letter stating that the company is going to maintain that property?
Sure.
So...
Under Wayne County's jurisdiction, we have to pass a resolution authorizing me to sign it because they do not go after the property owner. They hold the city liable. Because we're here, the property owners change. So once you approve me to sign it, that's why I have them submit a letter to you guys letting them know that they will be liable for this. And if they don't, you see, if we have to obtain it or take over it, then that's a cost factor. It becomes involved.
But that's kind of weird in charge of that.
Right, right.
So does make an application mean sign it?
Yeah, I just. Yeah, I have to sign it on behalf of the city of Inkster. Plus submit a resolution which you guys are about to pass.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
And this company is like a seller.
That's the owner.
That's the owner of the company. Yeah. When I bring these before you guys, I always get a letter from the owner saying they will be responsible for this. And I always run it by attorneys to make sure we're in good standing when we do this.
Any other questions up here? Okay, ready for vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Item D, consideration and approval of an offer to purchase two vacant residential parcels. Vacant lot number one is formerly known as 26323 Stamford is located on the south side of Stamford Street between John Daly and Bayhand Ave and is legally described as duly noted. Vacant lot number two is located on the north side of Stamford between Bayhand and Meadowdale Ave and is legally described as duly noted in the amount of $500 by Team Cares Inc., Mary Kavanaugh.
So move. Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Consideration and approval to set a fee for the collection bins as part of ordinance 868, collection bins on an ordinance to regulate the method of use of collection bins to ensure appropriate locations that was approved on February 5th, 2018.
So move.
Support.
We gotta set them out.
Set them out. Oh, that's right. We had two.
Yeah, we had 100, 125.
100 and 125. I move that we set the amount of $125.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion?
Uh, it has a renewal fee. Are we going to do an annual fee or are we gonna do a renewal?
It's gonna be a renewal fee and an initial application. So what's the, is the renewal fee gonna be the same as the initial application? And do you want that? That's what you guys want? Or should it be less? Should it be the same?
I think it should be the same every year, $125.
Okay. Alright, so do we have another support for that?
Support.
Okay, discussion? Alright, all those in favor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Item F, consideration and approval of a one-day gaming license and one-day liquor license for the Inkster Task Force fundraiser, Ink Town Derby Days, to be held May 5th, 2018 at the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex.
So move. Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? Be great to have some homemade wine there. Think that could be possible? Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval of the Recreation Passport Grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
So, um, so moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Item H is consideration and approval of the renaming of the Justice Center to Anderson Crutcher Young Justice Center.
So move.
So move, support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
To act in accordance, um, item, excuse me, item I, to act in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, Melendez.
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
To act in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, James Moore.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Alright, we're at the favorite part, public participation. Alright, Officer Wall.
Some people's favorite part. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come today and address an issue that we are facing with the warmer weather approaching. And it's a big issue in our city most years, most of the time, illegal dumping. We are in the process of putting together a, well, actually, we have it. We're in the process of creating a program for an illegal dumping task force. We've made several improvements and taken action as to how we're going to address that. I wanted to talk about a couple of things with regards to the task force and what we're doing now and what we need help with and what citizens can do. So illegal dumping is when you see obviously somebody coming into the area that may belong there, usually doesn't belong there, and leaves debris. Just dumps it off their truck or what have you. And that's an in-progress activity. So if you see that happening in progress, everybody has a cell phone. Take a picture. If you can get a driver's license, or I'm sorry, a license plate number. Pictures is worth a thousand words, so that's major help in our investigation. Call right away, the police department number. We also have the after-the-fact situation where the dumping is done. You didn't see what was done, but we can find out possibly through going through an investigation of the debris where it came from, where it originated from, and we'll follow through an investigation that way. And that can be reported on See Click Fix. Also, you know, calling the department, calling code enforcement. We also have partnered with Crime Stoppers for a reward system. We have these lovely flyers, posters are gonna be posted everywhere. You can call Crime Stoppers. They're gonna give us the information. And you can be awarded up to $1,000 for information leading to conviction of the offenders in this, in this crime. We've got a lot of good things coming up. We're utilizing cameras in the city. We're not gonna tell you where they are. We've been very successful in several cases where we've identified the offenders and taken them to task. And we look forward to the participation of our residents. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Open note.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
So happy to see you this evening and to our citizens. I'm here to, to invite you to come and join our luncheon. This is an annual luncheon that the Inkster Community Foundation sponsor every year. And we get, the money that we raise, we give scholarships out to students that live in Inkster. So the tickets are $40 and we're going to have it at the Wayne Tree Manor on Van Born, April the 7th, which is about a month from now. That's the first Saturday in April. And we want everyone to come out. I'm expecting all of my council people to get a ticket for me. So I will see you right after the meeting. And I expect the audience to buy tickets. I have quite a few more tickets to sell. They have good food. We're gonna have. You have some bacon cheese, you have some green beans, you have salad, you have dessert, you have fruit. They're not, we didn't order that. I'll make the dresses. Oh, I'm sorry. The speaker will be Dr. Shelley.
And the time.
New student attendant at Wayne Westland School. And we want you to come out. We don't wanna have just the walls for her to speak to. We want people there. So I invite you to come and join us.
What's the time?
And the time.
Oh, I'm sorry, 11:30. They're on the ticket. Quit asking me questions. You gotta get a ticket to know when to come.
Pastor Gene Overman.
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We also have Lady McLendon from Commissioner Anderson.
Okay.
So, um, a couple of announcements.
You have some of your time for?
Always. I just didn't want us to forget her. Um, the NAACP, we are hosting the candidate forum for the 13th congressional seat. Want to invite the Inkster Task Force as well as Voice to be partners with us in this effort. That day, we have scheduled for June 2nd, 12 to 2. It's at the Dozier. So if we can get all of us that's doing this to really work on this together, it would be great. And it's for the 13th congressional seat candidate forum. Also, Operation Refuge, please join us. Sign up on Thursdays at 10 o'clock, 27717 Carlisle. This month, T-FAP 322 is American cheese, fresh eggs, black beans, salmon, whole-grain spaghetti and spaghetti sauce. My mother said I should tell everyone that, that watches television. So they'll know what we have this month. Said it would help them out. Also, we're looking for girls grades four through 12 for Camp Inspire. If you're an aspiring student of STEM, good grades, good citizenship, please just give me a call. 734-709-7806. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Mary McLendon.
Thank you, Pastor Overman. I appreciate that. Mayor and to the council and to all the dignitaries here, I'm Lady Mary McLendon from the Office of Wayne County, Glenn Anderson. It's a pleasure to be here. I just want to remind you of the coffee hours. Next week is the next coffee hour. And in Inkster, it begins at 12 and it ends at 1 o'clock. And I think you know the new location for now is 2700 Hamlin Boulevard, which is the Western Wayne Family Health Center. As you know, it traditionally is at the library, but as you know what has happened with the library for now. So until another location has been established, that is the location. It'll be for March and April unless something else has been indicated to you. And again, it's at 12 o'clock at that location. Also, we know that it's pothole season. Unfortunately, unfortunately, that's a season that we don't like to celebrate and don't like to acknowledge, but when you ride down the streets, you don't have a choice but to realize that it's pothole season. And I want you to know that we in Wayne County take the road seriously, but there are so many roads in Wayne County until you just cannot be everywhere. I was here one time and I hope the roads that were communicated to me were patched up. But you know, we had snow right after they were patched.
Yeah, that's true.
And then the snow patch, snow patch. And of course, you know all about that. It's a continuous effort. So for those of you, if you have a pothole in your area and it is a county road, please call 844-929-6311. Again, 844-929-6311. There is a live operator that will talk to you. You will not get caught up in the prompts and all of that, and then you go back to the beginning again. That does not happen. There's a real representative that's there. If you're trying to report the road and it's not Wayne County, they will let you know if that's the state or if that's the city's road. So be sure to give them a call. And they're very gracious when you do call because I did call and reported the streets that were communicated to me when I was at your meeting and here at this meeting. And the gentleman was very gracious. So don't hesitate to call. They will take your call and they will get out as fast as they can. Also, spring is really approaching soon and a lot of the children are interested in the marshmallow drop, okay, that Wayne County does. So those of you who deal with children, you have children or grandchildren, that's March 30th at 11 o'clock until 12. And it's at the Nankin Mill Recreation Area. And that's on Edward Hines Drive, okay, and that's within the city of Westland. And of course, the children have a ball at the marshmallow drops. But they do need to bring their own basket so that they can put their own marshmallows in their own basket and accumulate their marshmallows. So again, that's on March 30th. And it begins at 11 and it is until 12. So that would just be a great opportunity for the children. They like to run. That's in the park. So it gives them a chance to run, run, run. That's what they like to do since they have so much energy. I wish we could get some of that energy. But that's on March 30th. And that's all that I have except for those of you who are interested and have... And that's all that I have, except for those of you who are interested in hepatitis A vaccinations, okay? You can go to the Health Department there at Van Born and Vinoy Roads, or you can call 727-7101, and that's area code 734, and that's at a nominal cost, if anything, for that hepatitis A vaccination. Thank you, if I could take something back to the Commissioner, I'd be more than happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. John Conyers III.
Greetings, Mayor and Council, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Citizens, members of the community. I just wanted to come and say hello. I'm going to be running for the 13th Congressional District, so I just wanted to put a face to the name. If I'll be around afterwards, if anyone wants to talk to me or take my cellphone number, I always give that out, I give that out, I'm available to everyone for whatever you need, so please come to hello. It's a pleasure, thank you for having me.
Tell your momma to say hi. Officer Levo.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, audience. First one, to start off with saying that our bake sale on the 21st was a huge success. I'm sorry for those that showed up late, we sold out early. It was good, believe me.
We were not late.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, people that showed up before the time it was done, but we sold out at 1 o'clock, and it usually goes until 2. Special shout-out to Midwest Recycling for a very generous donation they made to the bake sale to help support the Easter egg hunt. I know I spoke about it last time, but you know, gonna say it again. Saturday, March 31st, from 11 to 2, we're going to have an Easter egg hunt. It's gonna be, I'm telling you, the Easter egg hunt to top the Easter egg hunt, so you gotta come out. Registration is available on eventbrite.com or through the Inkster Police Department's Facebook page. It is free, completely free, but please register, we have a head count, a roundabout. This is a huge community partnership under the Unity in the Community partnerships between Inkster Task Force, the Police Department, Mothers' Pantry, Operation Refuge, Starfish Family Services, the Alpha Kappa Alphas, and Inkster Housing Commission. So it's going to be a great time. We're gonna have a whole host of activities on top of the Easter egg hunt, we'll have prizes, selfies with the Easter bunny, face painting, arts and crafts, games, just a good free family fun day. Once again, Saturday, March 31st, from 11 to 2, hope to see you all there. Oh, I'm sorry, at the Rec Center. And this is also, is open from ages zero to 12.
Who's the Easter bunny?
The Easter bunny.
Boy, oh boy. Miguel Mohammed.
I got one, I got one.
One more.
Okay, a few more things, Coffee with the Cop, our next one, we had a great conversation last month, this month's conversation is gonna be on Tuesday, March 13th, this coming up Tuesday, I'm sorry, next Tuesday, 10 a.m. at Applewood Coney Island on Michigan Avenue. No agendas, no speeches, just come with anything you want to talk about, and we'll discuss it with your local police officers. And last but not least, Romulus Police Department is doing a Pucks for Pets fundraiser to support the Romulus Animal Shelter, who is, who takes our stray dogs, and anytime we have an animal run, they're the ones that come out. It is going to be Romulus Police Officers versus Detroit Red Wings alumni. It is, we're selling tickets, pre-sale tickets are $10, at the door they're $15, 100% of the proceeds go to support the Romulus Animal Shelter. See me if you would like to buy some tickets, thank you.
All right, thank you. Miguel.
All right.
She bought us a balloon, y'all.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council and citizens of Inkster. I just wanted to pause and make this public thank you to one of your councilpeople who came and rescued me during that snowstorm, and that would be the one and only Stephen Chisholm, and I am just so grateful to you for that. And I could've done it privately, but I wanted to do it publicly so that the citizens know just how awesome you are if they don't already know that. And also, Officer Terrence Wooton was there and helped to push my inoperable car off of the road, and I didn't have to pay a hundred dollars for a tow, and they stayed until the job was done, and I am so grateful for that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Did you tie it on the wrist?
Thank you.
Will Miller.
Good evening, Council, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Right. Up here to remind everybody about the Board of Review meeting that's gonna be coming up for the City of Inkster here. It's set for March 19th, 20th, and 21st. It's gonna be here at the City Hall here in the council chambers, on the 19th and the 21st will be from 10 to 5. On the 19th, it'll be for folks who can't get here early, it'll be from 3 to 9 p.m. So people, check your mail assessments, homeowners in the city, check your mail assessments, they should be coming in the mail if they haven't already gotten there, they should be there soon. I mean, it's good news for the City of Inkster though, 'cause values are going up after a long, long time of declines. But if you haven't come to the Board of Review at any of that time, you may have missed the chance to get your values assessed properly to how it is with the current actual true cash values. So, and this is gonna be one of your last times, values are going up, the downtime is over with. So you want to make sure you come out. If you are a homeowner in the city, take a look, get your assessments set at time, 19th, 20th, 21st, to come in and talk to the, to talk to the board about making sure that your taxes are assessed properly. That's pretty much it, it's a real important time this time of year. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask him a question? When you say the assessed, properties assessed, do we have an assessor come out and assess our property?
We have an assessor.
Okay, and when was the last time they assessed the property?
Well, the assessment is done every year.
Every year?
The assessment notices went out recently, I think some people started getting them over the weekend today, but the assessment is done on an annual basis, and we call committing the tax roll, and that's part of the assessment process.
And the reason why I was saying this, 'cause I watched something on E-60, something in Detroit, they were not assessing them value that they shouldn't have been, so they assessed them, what was it, too high, it was, no, was it too high?
They were too high, yeah.
Yeah, so I was just making sure that we are...
Well, you're required by law to assess, now, getting it right or accurate is...
Right. So how do we find out whether or not if our property values are being assessed correct way?
That's part of what Mr. Miller just spoke to, the Board of Appeal, so individual residents, if they have issue with the amount that the city and the assessor has set for the value of their home, they can appeal that before the Board of Appeal.
I heard a question in the crowd, and they said, do I have to sit there from 10 to 5 to talk about, I'm like, no, you call in to the assessor, and they'll send an appointment for you to come in at a time that's convenient for you. So, no, you don't have to stand there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
And audience and friends, I'm here to make two announcements. One is for our NAACP Western Wayne Health Fair, it's gonna be March 23rd at the Hype Athletic Center on Howe Street on Friday, March 23rd, from 11 till 4. We would like everyone to come out, please, from Inkster and participate, we're gonna have some great providers there that offer a lot of testing, as well as the Wayne County Health Department, so if you don't get to the Health Department for your shot for hepatitis, they'll be more than happy to give you that, as well as other STDs. And also to invite you to our next Monday's NAACP meeting, which is gonna be Monday, March 12th, at 7 o'clock at the Caroline Kennedy Library, 24590 George Street, and that's in Dearborn Heights. We try and move our quarterly meetings around to some of the other cities that we serve, and we're more than happy to have you attend, thank you.
Thank you.
7 o'clock.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, directors, family, friends, Inkster family, happy to be here. I'm here on behalf of State Representative Jewel Jones, of course, who is currently at Garden City's council meeting. I just wanted to announce that the State of Michigan is now in March's Reading Month. I know the hardships of Inkster schools, but we do know that our children are still going to school, and we would love for you guys to invite us out, just to commune and fellowship with the young kids. I can be reached by the office number, 517-373-0849, or I can be reached by email, and that's Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for public participation. Madam Clerk.
We're once again coming upon election season, so if there's anyone who would like to be an election inspector for the upcoming election season, please give the Clerk's office a call at 313-563-9770. Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer.
Just to reiterate, Mr. Miller spoke to it, but the Appeal, Board of Appeals will be meeting in two weeks, beginning, two weeks from today, and appointments can be made either in person or by calling into the assessor's office.
Councilwoman Oden.
Tied out with me again. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Vivens, his crew, great job that they have done, rain with the snow, the roads, so forth and so on. They've really been out and around taking care of the business, really pleased with how they dealt with it, and I just think that this need to be acknowledged for, recognized, and I want to say thank you. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There are two or three things I want to speak to this evening. I've been asked to remind you all that the Inkster Chamber of Commerce will host on March 27th at 6 o'clock p.m. their Networking Mixer, and the tickets are forty dollars, and they are hopeful, is that correct, forty dollars? And they're hopeful that not just business people, but citizens will come too for the Networking Mixer. The Inkster Task Force is sponsoring, I guess Inkster's first Ink Town Derby Day. This is a derby party, and it is going to be something that Inkster's never seen before, trust me. Ladies will be in their big hats, gentlemen will be in their seared sucker suits. There will be gaming tables, there will be food, there will be fun, there will be a signature drink, and just a good time. So the tickets are going to be forty dollars, I have them, the mayor has them, I'm gonna give them to everybody, you can't get out unless I get a ticket, give you a ticket. Pastor Overman has them, and we just want you to come and enjoy the afternoon, it's gonna be a lot of fun. We will watch the Derby also. So at post-time, we'll be around big screen televisions and ready to watch the horses run. And the final thing is, I don't know if I was supposed to get an invitation, but I wound up Saturday in a meeting of a core group of people at the invitation of Lincoln Park, the City of Lincoln Park, to create an Economic Justice Summit. What I heard was extremely exciting. I'm trying to get a grip on all the technicalities, but I want you to be aware that on April 28th, there will be this economic summit. Others at the table were the Office of Eric Sabree, our Wayne County Treasurer, the President of the Detroit City Council, Brenda Jones, and people from Lincoln Park and myself. And it's a concept that I'd never heard before, but I'll give you more information, I won't belabor it this evening, but it makes sense to me, and it also alleviates some pressure from cities. So as time goes on, I will give you more detailed information, but I would like for you to pencil April 28th in. We all need to be informed, and when it comes to economic and social justice, we know what it means to be on the opposite end of that receiving stick. So this will be an opportunity for us to possibly arm ourselves with some very good information that can help us move forward very positively. That is it for me, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Watley.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Inkster.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to remind you that the Memorial Day Parade is coming. I know a lot of people think, 'cause snow's still on the ground, you don't have to prepare for it, but trust me, that time flies by. This parade, we're going to have floats again. One of the floats that has been chosen is a community garden, and I'm asking for all the block clubs to get together and help decorate that float. Now, one of the mini-hats that Connie Mitchell wears, she's now wearing that one. If you want to be, if you want to help decorate the community garden float, see Councilwoman Mitchell, and she'll get with you, and you all will have pictures and everything and decide what you want to put on it, but what happens is, you do all your decorations based on the picture that you're seeing, and that morning, you will decorate the float with the parade company, okay? So she'll have all the information, I'll see that she gets it, and you'll be able, but we'd like to see the block clubs come together and do that, I think it would be swell. One of our other floats is dedicated to public safety, so it'll be dedicated to police and fire, and they've already gotten on board, they've gotten excited about what they're going to do to, you know, trick out this float, you know, fire. It's gonna be good, you all will enjoy it, and then there'll be another one, and I'll let that be a surprise, okay? All right, so get your, get your applications in as soon as possible so we can, you know, start our lineup and all the other things. We should have our posters out by the end of this month, if not before. The other thing is, that I want to speak of, is that we have talked for a long time about the aggregation and dissemination of information, and we have several programs coming up this month that hopes to foster that. One of them is a conversation with the churches. The clerk has sent out letters to all of the churches in the Inkster area, and we would like them to come to a meeting to start talking about how we can network with each other to make sure Inkster's entire community knows what's going on. Now, church is where everybody goes, okay? So what we're looking for is a liaison between us and the churches to carry information back to them and disseminate it throughout the church. So that's going to be on March 26th at 5 p.m. at Christ Temple. I don't know the numbers, I know there's a 771, but it's right there on Carlisle.
277-41.
Thank you, Carlisle, and we're gonna have a conversation with the churches. We hope every church will attend, because we are the best way to get our information out, all right? The second thing that we're doing in addition to this is Human Resources, the Clerk's office, and I'm just gonna throw ICANN in there because I am ICANN, have initiated a volunteer registration day. Now, this is going to be on the 29th of March at 5 p.m. here in City Hall. What we're looking for is someone to do things that they're always complaining don't get done. Yeah, so now, if you're in charge of doing it, guess what's gonna happen, it's gonna get done, okay? So we're looking for volunteers. Every department in the city often needs help. We want to develop a cadre of volunteers that we can call, or you can choose who you'd like to volunteer with, you know? And we're gonna set that up so we always have somebody to do what needs to be done. Now, you know my motto, it's when your contributions outweigh your criticisms, then we can talk, okay?
All right.
All right. Now, hey, that's it.
That was swell.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Howard. Councilman Chisholm.
I only have two things, or one is...
I only have two things, one is a two-in-one. Just like last council meeting, chicken and fish dinners are being sold at St. Clement's during this tax season. And also for low-income households that need their taxes done at no charge, Monday nights and Wednesday nights at St. Clement's Church until April 15th, which is tax day, between 6 and 8 p.m., you can get your taxes done and grab a bite to eat. So that's where I'll be heading after the council meeting, so if you should feel compelled to join me, not on my dime, please do. And then also, I just wanna tell everyone out there who wished, I got a multitude who wishes a happy birthday, back this past Thursday, I turned the 30/30, so just wanna say thank you very much. My gray hairs and eyeglasses actually remind me of my age now, so thank you all.
Just wait.
Right, right. Right, yeah. Mayor Proto.
Thank you. I only have one thing. The neighbors are in Hopkins, that's east of Bayham. Now Hopkins is a one-way street, well, it's dead end and there's no parking sign on their street. So they have a hard time because people are parking on both sides of the street, so if you're trying to back out the driveway, you can't get out the driveway. So if we can have Jerome's apartment to kindly put a no parking sign over there, we'd greatly appreciate it. And stop Inkster.
Mayor, before you go on, can I mention one more thing? It was written down here. In addition to us trying to communicate with everyone, we're starting a campaign that's called Get on the List. And what that is, is an events list that goes out every month. I believe most of you in here are on that list already. And what it does, it tells you events that are occurring in Inkster during that entire month. And if you have something that's occurring in Inkster, you can call and we'll put it on the list with the rest of that information. But it's the Get on the List Campaign, so if you're interested, you can see me about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. March 15th.
What, you want a number?
Is that what you need?
Okay, you can email, I can give you an email address, I don't wanna, but call me.
Okay. March 15th, Lunch with the Mayor. It's getting warmer, so we're gonna have some different food, hopefully. Also, I don't know if you people noticed, the young man who just walked out of the meeting, his name is Bill Cobbs, he's a governor candidate, Democratic Governor candidate. I hope, I wish he stayed, cause I was gonna point him out to you so you could talk to him, but we will definitely get him back out here so you can learn some information about him, be able to ask him some questions and, you know, size up him as a candidate. It is political season, so at Lunch with the Mayor, we're gonna start bringing some of these folks who want your vote out to the luncheon. It'll be open to whoever's running. We're not gonna discriminate because the idea is to get the information to you. So we'll have somebody at next week's meeting, at least one, if not more, and you can let people know if you run into the candidates, they're welcome to come to Lunch with the Mayor to address some of our residents and tell them who they are. Also, we started something new here last month, Employee of the Month. So I wanna announce our Employee of the Month for February, which is Gina Clark. Wave, Gina. She is our Director of Human Resources and she keeps up on things as attention to detail, which saved us a little drama, a little money and some possible problems in the future. And she's always like that, y'all. She comes to my office four or five times a day. I mean, I'm basically banning her from my office, but she's definitely on top of things. We wanted to recognize her and we're gonna continue it every month. Hopefully every month we'll have an outstanding employee so we can recognize that, you know? If not, we'll just ask Jerome what's going on. I'd like to acknowledge my neighbor Holly Skinner for finally coming to the City Council meeting. She's been talking about for a couple of years, come to a meeting, she finally made it tonight. So wave at everybody.
Welcome.
All right, that's all I have. It was good to see you all and we will see you in two weeks. Push it forward, Dr. Emmett.
Oh, did you? I missed.
We probably moved and supported all those favorites, hi.
Aye.
Who's name?
Nah, I thought it was gonna be bad, but it wasn't.
Yeah.
Hi, how are you? All right, well, that's a good thing.